Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. This is the regularly scheduled Beloit City Council meeting. We're at 100 State Street in Beloit, Wisconsin, in the City Hall Forum at 7:00 PM, Monday, May 21st. Mistress, Madam Clerk, call to order and roll call.
Roll call shows all councilors present.
Thank you, and second is Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every tea and justice for all.
Three special orders of the day and announcements. Item 3A is a proclamation declaring May 20th through 26th, 2012, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Vice President Spicer will deliver the proclamation.
The proclamation of the city of Beloit, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality medical care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas emergency medical services teams consist of emergency physician, sorry, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the city of Beloit, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th to 26th, 2012, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme EMS More Than a Job, a Calling. And we encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Adopted this 21st day of May, 2012, Charles M. Haynes, President, Beloit City Council.
Thank you very much. Council President, Council Members, City Manager Arf, and my fellow citizens, thank you very much for this proclamation. Recognizing EMTs and paramedics of the Beloit Fire Department, and furthermore, our critical partners, the doctors and nurses of the Beloit Memorial Hospital Emergency Department, the leadership of Dr. Barney, our medical director, and the EMS coordinator at Beloit Hospital, Barb Cuska. Barb has been with the paramedic program since its inception in 1974. In February of 1974, she was with us in the training of the initial paramedics that started on the Beloit Fire Department, so we have to give her a lot of thanks for being with us through the entire duration of our program. Department guidance given by Deputy Chief Joe Murray and paramedic coordinators Lieutenant Sean Ebert, Agent Lieutenant Jeremy Flanagan, and firefighter/paramedic Jessica Flanagan. I had intended to have an ambulance for you this evening to, for visitors and the council members to be able to observe, however, they were deployed this evening on a tactical response, so they're not able to be with me this evening. But I want to thank you for your dedication to the paramedic program and making sure that we provide the highest level of service through your tax law support, and then also your support of our strategic initiatives. We have a great program. I believe it is absolutely second to none with our medical director, Dr. Barney, and the skills that he allows us to perform, and the equipment that you give us to do that job makes us absolutely second to none with the skills that are applied by the consummate professionals that work with us in the Beloit Fire Department. I have some of the greatest medics that I've ever met. I served 14 years as a paramedic and enjoyed every minute of it, and that's one of the things I miss the most about being on the line as being a paramedic. So thank you again for the support with this proclamation. Item 3B is a recognition of the recipients of Landmarks Commission Historic Preservation Awards. Chairman, Commission Chair Rick McGrath will present that proclamation.
As Chair of Landmarks Commission, as you likely know, it's a checkered situation. We lose some, we win some. When we have a chance to win one, we like to celebrate that. I would like, Mr. and Ms. Marks, if you might step forward. And is anybody here from Gateway Redevelopment?
Matt.
Oh, Matt. I'm sorry, I didn't. Come on down. So this was a win. As you know, it's kind of an iterative process. Degradation, it's death by a thousand cuts. But the wins, it's an iterative process as well. This house was slated for demolition back in '07, and when we heard about it, we just, a number of us from the Landmark Commission went and took a tour of the house. You can see some of those pictures inside here. I've been in a lot of old houses, a lot of old houses that needed help. This was perhaps the most challenged house I've ever been in. This is a testament to the fact that if there's a will and some cash, I won't deny that, if there's a will, these homes can be brought around. The house was sound, it just needed a lot of help. And to the extent that Gateway Redevelopment saved the house, brought it back, I will be forever thankful that you guys did it. The Marks then stepped in and took what Matt and his associates have done and take it up to an additional level. I would like to present this to Matt. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for what you've done. It's a big win. Take a look, drive by. What often happens, the city, if the property owner, if property gets so bad, it gets demolished. That was the quick and easy solution for this house, but then what? What do you end up with? You end up with a vacant lot, and eventually, someone's going to put an infill. What I've observed is that oftentimes that infill is substandard. Demassing, the age, the quality of the house, you have a rhythm to the street, and then you have this little infill thing, and it just, it's disruptive. This is wonderful that we have this win, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3C is a presentation by the School District of Beloit Board of Education for Resolution and Appreciation of the Beloit City Council. And I believe the Council of the, or President of the School Board is here, and I'll see if I can.
Thank you. Some council members, City Manager Larry Arf, President Haines, it is with great pleasure that I'm here tonight to present to you the Community Appreciation Proclamation. So I'd first like to read it and say a few words. School District of Beloit Board of Education, Resolution 11-12.02, Board of Education, Community Appreciation. Whereas in each community, the public schools are shaped by that community to provide the most appropriate and effective education for the children who attend those schools, and whereas, public schools are dependent on the community's support in countless ways, including support of lunch and learn programs, business partnerships, annual funding of operations, and the election of school board members, and whereas, community governing bodies and organizations, including the City Council, Chamber of Commerce, Greater Beloit Economic Development Corporation, Beloit 2020, and whereas, community citizens are valuable in supporting its local schools, including Imagine Beloit community members, and whereas, much of the community's knowledge and opinions about the public schools rely on responsible reporting by local news media representatives who decide which news to share with the community, how much attention will be focused on various issues, and what tone of the reporting will be. Therefore, be it resolved that the School District of Beloit Board of Education expresses its appreciation and thanks to the local taxpayers, the aforementioned community organizations, city, citizens committees, and the governing bodies for generously supporting the School District of Beloit in its endeavor to improve school facilities, enhance its image, continue its strong academic achievements, and address the present and future educational needs of the students. The support received from this community in passing the $70 million referendum, which will provide the best public schools we can for every child who attends them, is greatly respected and valued. Adopted this 21st day of April, 2012, by the School District of Beloit Board of Education, signed Shannon Schumer-President, Michael Ramsdale Clerk. With that, I would like to present to you the, excuse me, the framed proclamation, and again, express not only our gratitude, but our appreciation, because this proclamation is so minute in reference to the partnership and collaboration that we feel is so necessary, as I know you all do as well, to make Beloit the city that we want it to be. And I hope that the City Council and the community partners and everyone has seen the great strides that the school district has made, and we could not have done it without the commitment and the backing of our City Council, all of our city members, all of our constituents, as well as all of the community organizations, Imagine Beloit, everybody that was mentioned within this proclamation. Certainly, as we know with the votes, it was very close, and without everybody's true support and dedication, we wouldn't have been able to do this. So gratitude is sincerely expressed, and again, thank you all for all of your support.
Item 4A, Public Hearings.
A resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow an outdoor seating area, the outdoor sales possession and consumption of alcohol, and indoor alcohol sales in a C2 neighborhood commercial district for the property located at 2683 Prairie Avenue, doing business as Thirsty Badger. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Ms. Christiansen.
This property is located at the corner of Prairie Avenue and Post Road, and was most recently Rudy's La Peria. Because the liquor license was discontinued, a conditional use permit is needed, is required for the indoor alcohol sales, and then, as you know, because you've reviewed many, the zoning ordinance requires a conditional use for outdoor seating areas for bars or restaurants, so that also has to be reviewed. The proposed outdoor seating area will be located on the north side of the building, facing Post Road, and will be approximately 1,100 square feet in area. Patrons will have access through a door in the bar area, and it will include an emergency exit. There is a site plan included in your packet. They are proposing a fence that consists of brick columns and a lot of iron railing. They have proposed a fence height of five or six feet. That would require Board of Appeals approval before that could be granted. The occupancy at this time has not been determined. They're asking for as much as they can have. However, at this point, they have not finished the renovations inside, so an occupancy for the inside hasn't been established, so we will work with them in terms of the occupancy for the outdoor seating area. This did go to the Plan Commission, they had its last meeting, and one of the items that came up that they debated was landscaping. Landscaping is kind of rough at the site, so what the Plan Commission did recommend was a condition in the resolution which relates to landscaping, asking that planning staff review the landscaping and make any recommendations. We did take a look at it, we did go out there. There are, right after the resolution meeting packet, there are some photographs. You can see that there are, I guess, sort of an island that has landscaped timbers on the outside. We do believe there's some room for foundation plantings and a replace, to put some landscape, more landscaping, or nicer landscaping within that little island. So I think we feel we can just work with the applicant, that we don't need a specific condition that requires a landscape plan, but that's, I guess, at your discretion, what you would like to do. So what is being recommended tonight is a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow an outdoor seating area and outdoor sales possession and consumption of alcohol, subject to the condition that this conditional use permit shall authorize the indoor alcohol sales plus the outdoor seating area, that prior to establishment of the conditional uses, the applicant shall obtain a liquor license for the indoor and outdoor premises, that a fence shall include the outdoor seating area, and the applicant shall only be allowed to erect a fence taller than four feet if the Board of Appeals grants a variance to the height requirements, that they obtain an architectural review certificate and fence permit before constructing the fence. The maximum capacity will be determined following the finalization of the building floor plan. The applicant is required to provide parking equal to 50% capacity, which will drive how many people they can have in their outdoor seating area. The maximum capacity shall be posted inside the building and within the outdoor seating area. The door leading to the outdoor seating area shall be marked as an exit. The outdoor seating area shall include two emergency exit doors or gates that are at least three feet wide, and a clear exit pass should be maintained at all times. The emergency exit doors or gates shall be located on the east and west sides of the outdoor seating area to provide immediate access to the front and rear parking lots. The applicant shall provide a visible and audible fire alarm within the seating area. Planning staff shall review the site's landscaping and recommend landscape improvements to the applicant. Music may not be played in the outdoor seating area after 10:00, and the outdoor seating area shall include trash and recycling containers, and all others shall be disposed of in a proper and appropriate manner daily, and then our standard condition about minor changes being able to be approved by staff, but major changes coming back through this public process. And Plan Commission did approve this unanimously, subject to adding condition number nine.
Thank you. I'd like to now open the public hearing for 4A, a resolution authorizing conditional use permit to allow an outdoor seating area and an outdoor sales of possession and consumption of alcohol, and indoor alcohol sales in a C2 neighborhood commercial district for the property located at 2683 Prairie Avenue, doing business as the Thirsty Badger. Does anyone wish to come and speak on this issue? Second call, does anyone wish to come forward and speak on this issue? On final time, third time, does anyone wish to come and speak on this issue? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Luke Key, second by Kincaid. Counsel, lady.
Just a couple of questions to, I'll start out with Ms. Christiansen, and maybe Beth would have to jump in as well. I, several years now, we've been putting a lot of these out there. Have we seen any major violations, any trouble with having these that we're putting out there? Who patrols to make sure that they're adhering to this? Do we have a routine inspection? Is it putting more work on the department? Because over the years, we see a lot more coming out, which is great, I'm okay with that, but I just wanted to know, how are we measuring this? Do we see any violations or anything?
We did go out in the spring and did have to issue some notices of violation for, basically what they did is, there was plexiglass on one, it was all related to, because these are areas where people can smoke, but they were trying to contain it so it was warmer. And we did, I don't believe we had to go to ticket for any of them, they've all complied. They, from our perspective, they haven't caused a great staff load after approval. And then we go through the normal process to get it established, and then we follow up to make sure that they're complying with the conditions, but it's no more staff time than any conditional use permit.
Okay.
It's just the typical, and I don't know what Beth is saying.
Okay. Okay.
And I don't know that they just had any issues with it.
I was just wondering, because I know we're starting to see a lot of these, and I just wanted to make sure that things are running along as smoothly as possible, and I know it's something new over the last few years.
Yeah. And we have a member on Plan Commission who's from Germany who just thinks they're just no big deal. They're just normal, so they're just new to us, I think. I think it's always nice on, you know, nice days, as we're getting into nice weather, to be able to sit outside and enjoy the weather.
I agree, and I think we're going to probably see more and more coming, so I just want to make sure that we stay on top of it and not let it fall by the wayside of what we're doing, so.
And the applicant's not here tonight, because he was not well. He's ill today, so that's why he's not here.
Okay.
To answer your questions.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, President Haines. Regarding condition number nine, the way the language is, it puts the owners all on our staff, that they'll review the landscaping plan and make recommendations. Have you had a conversation with the owner? Are they, are they open to the staff's recommendations? There's no, nothing in the language seems to necessitate that they comply with your recommendations, so I just want to make sure that there's at least a willingness to work with you.
We haven't spoken to him about it since the Plan Commission meeting. That was as the Plan Commission put it in. They just said Plan Commission, I don't think they knew what to do with the condition. I mean, I don't know, Chuck can probably speak to it. Because they didn't have these photos, so we were kind of talking without photos, and I think they weren't sure exactly what to require, because we didn't know where exactly the property lines were in relation to the pavement. You can put, you know, a stronger condition in there. I have not talked to Mike Driving since the meeting. I had expected him to be here this evening. I mean, if you want to put something more specific that says, you know, the applicant shall provide, that would be fine. And we had talked about, the staff was putting in there, the applicant shall submit a landscape plan, but that's not what Plan Commission recommended, so we put it in as they recommended it. I don't know that a full landscape plan is, I mean, a full landscape plan review is needed for this amount of landscaping. I mean, if you want to put in there that the applicant shall, you know, provide additional landscaping within that island and along the foundation, I think that would be a little bit stronger.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kincaid.
There, we will be reviewing, I understand, the architectural review committee will be reviewing fencing.
The staff reviews that as part of architecture.
Is that one the same of landscaping? I didn't quite, okay.
I mean, we, at this point, we would just review the fence design and layout. If you want us also to review the landscaping as part of that architectural review, you need to make it a condition.
I would think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Anyone else? Counselor.
I guess I'm wondering if an amendment could be made to the motion to change, I guess, the language in this condition.
Make that amendment.
Are you thinking that you'd rather just see the architectural review include the landscape review, or?
I don't think it hurts to be more explicit. In that way, we might be able to better support the staff in whatever recommendations it may want to make.
So would you like to make a motion to make that appropriate language amendment?
Yes, I would like to, I guess.
Ah. I'll put the motion as stated by the council person before the end of the statement.
So Attorney Krieger, are we just circumventing now?
If you perhaps can step forward for Mr. Lukey, what exactly you would like in the amendment? I'm sure that Mr. Lukey will then make that motion, will have a second on that motion and really take a vote.
Okay.
But specifically, as very specific, if you can do it.
Okay. Thank you for the point.
All right, then. Counselor Lukey, I would suggest that the amendment might state that, let me check, the architectural review will include a review of landscaping, and that, that the owner will provide, we don't want your landscaping plan, so.
Okay.
Are you sure that's not two owners on the owner? Okay, that the owner will provide a landscaping plan to the staff for approval?
If I understand it correctly, that which condition are we talking about?
Nine.
Number nine.
That that includes that the applicant provide a landscape plan for staff review.
Architectural review, yes.
There's a separate landscape plan, correct, Ms. Christiansen?
That the architectural review.
Yeah, the architectural review and landscape code are together, so you're talking about that application. They need to submit that application with a landscape plan. That's what you want to do?
Right.
Okay. I think that's fairly clear. The person who seconded the motion, are they willing to second that motion?
I second.
All right. Then you take a vote on the amendment first, and then a vote on the merits.
No, I think, I think not. Okay, so we have first a motion, and second amendment, all in favor of the amendment to the, to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All aye. All opposed? Hearing done, passes seven zero. Now we'll move on to the original, or the amended motion. I understand what you want me to do next.
Mr. President, I'll move on the merits.
Okay, so do we, do we need another?
We need to make a motion on the merits.
Okay, so we're going to do that again, okay, all right.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Okay, so motion by DeForest and second by Lukey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, passes seven zero. All right. And we'll dispense with four, we are now on to number five, if citizens participate in participation. And in this point is where citizens may come forward and speak with the council and staff about items that are concerning them. They're limited, we ask them, they limit their comments to three minutes, refrain from any personal attacks on staff or against council members. We have three people who've signed to come and address us. I'll start with Mr. Zor.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to represent the 1,790 people that voted for me and my platform. Obviously, it wasn't quite enough to win, but money is always an issue. What I'm here to speak on their behalf is, on one of my platform was term limits. I would like to ask the council tonight to put on the agenda for the next council meeting, draft up an ordinance for councilor term limits. I would like it to put a maximum on of three terms in any 10-year period. And assuming that happens, all is well. Assuming that doesn't happen, what the next step would be is, we, the people, would then do a ballot initiative by collecting the required number of signatures, which would then give City Council 30 days to pass the ordinance as drafted by the people, and no amendments would be allowed by City Council. You'd have to take it exactly in the form that it was. And if it is not passed within 30 days, then it would go on the ballot to be considered by the people of Beloit, and it would pass with a simple majority. The second thing I'd like to talk about is, I'd like to strongly urge you to vote against the resolution today to allow an increase in water rates. City Council just voted to increase solid waste fees not too long ago, a few months ago. City Council also recently voted in favor of a large property tax increase a few weeks ago in relationship to the school referendum. And the landlord permit also went up a few months ago, and the fact is, we're out of money. One of the things that really bothers me as being a homeowner in Beloit is the fixed portion on our monthly water bill, which includes things like trash pickup and sewer and so forth, is so large that on my rental property, which I had a few months vacant in there, where no water was used, no trash was being picked up, just look at that fixed portion of the bill, which I can't turn off, I can't say, hey, skip my house, there's no trash, represents almost 50% of what the property taxes were on that property. Now, property taxes are deductible. People can write that off when they file their federal income taxes. These fixed rates on things such as water fees, it's not tax deductible, it's just a fee. In reality, it's just, it's a tax by another name. So I'd like to ask you that it's time to start balancing the budget without increasing fees and taxes. Thanks.
And the next one I have is for Ms. Helen Nerdish.
Hi, good evening. I'm also asking for a term of events for the city councilors. I emailed everyone, two of you emailed me back and were for it. I think that it emphasizes citizens, a citizen-run government. More newcomers equals new. More newcomers equals new thinking and idea. It improves tendencies to vote on principle while minimizing incentives to vote for reelection, encourages more people to run, and citizen boards and commissions already have term limits. If it's good enough for them, it should be good enough for us. So I'm asking to put a draft ordinance right away and add it to the next meeting agenda.
Counsel, excuse me for being slow. I just gave, today spent all day giving tour third graders from Merrill School and Hackett School at the Black Historical, historical home. And I'm stiff. Okay, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Our home at 748 Wisconsin is in the College Park Historical District. It was built in 1907, as were two houses south of us, 744 and 738. However, in the 1940s or 1950s, it was renovated. The front porch was completely rebuilt and enclosed with jealousy windows. A garage was attached to the house with a room above. Aluminum stone windows were mounted on every window. Almost our entire south wall of our dining room was comprised of a picture window with two side windows, and they were not original to the house. These windows were inefficient and needed replacement. We replaced these windows with another picture window, two sides, a picture window on two sides, but in the form of a bay window. We did not realize how much work would be involved in replacing the old windows. It was not until the work had begun that we realized we needing a building permit. I went to City Hall to get a permit, but was told that the Landmark Commission had to approve our project before I got a building permit. I was not given a building permit. Subsequently, I was cited, went to court, and paid a fine because I did not have a building permit because I did not have permission from the Landmark Commission. Now, we have been ordered to remove that window by May 31st and return the house to its original appearance. We were told the new window is not historically accurate. Okay, which historical period must we replicate? Certainly nineteen, not 1907. We believe the Landmark Commission decision to deny appropriateness in this window is wrong. We asked the council to win a ream for us with the Landmark Commission, and we send that order to remove that window. And force us to restore the window to a condition that never existed during the entire ownership of our house. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Respectfully, Ron and Carol Klein. And I'll holler back.
Are there any other persons wanting to speak in their citizens' participation? Our second call for any other persons to speak during citizens' participation. And finally, the last and final call for anyone to speak under citizens' participation. Alexei?
Hi, May.
What's your name?
Rick McGrath, 1747 Sherwood, here in Beloit. I don't know if it warrants any sort of comment. My understanding is that the owners of, I forget the name, or forget the address, but Mr. Klein, at one time, it served on the Landmarks Commission. He was aware that he lived in Historic District. My understanding is that a stop work order had been delivered to him before he installed his new window. The old window had been removed. Stop work order had been issued. There was no building permit, there was no COA. He continued with the replacement of his window. That's my understanding of the situation.
No, sir, I think that this is getting to the point where we're.
There's a way this was handled.
So, we can discuss that with staff and with others afterwards. I think we've had that, we've had your side today. Item number six on the is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a councilor member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. The consent agenda consists of items six A through six E. We have a motion on the consent agenda. Motion for approval. Second, Mr. President. Motion by Lukey, second by Vander Bogart. Any council want anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll call the issue. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes seven zero. Item seven, ordinances, there are none. Eight are appointments. Read the following appointments. The Appointment Review Committee report to the city council. The undersigned Charles M. Haynes, due to the elected president of the Beloit City Council, subject to confirmation of the Beloit City Council. Here does appoint the following citizen members to vacancies in terms indicated below. Said appointment is being pursuant to nominations made and approved by the Appointment Review Committee at the regular meeting held at May 14th, 2012. Signed, Charles M. Haynes, President of Beloit City Council. Following appointments. Appointment Review Committee. Brandon D. Beavers Jackson, 1237 McKinley Avenue, replacing Jan Thrain into a term ending December 31st, 2014. Board of Appeals. Merlin Bussan, 3479 Fieldcrest Court, replacing Charles Kincaid to a term ending May 31st, 2013. Gregory D. Gall, 2067 Cobblestone Court, replacing Vince Boragani to a term ending May 31st, 2015. And to the Board of Ethics. Deborah Blazer, 1637 Johnson Street, replacing Lauren Stephens to a term ending December 31st, 2014. Motion for approval. Will you approve? Motion by Lukey, second by DeForest. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero. I'd also like to announce the following vacancies. Alcohol Beverage Licensing Control Committee has two vacancies for residents. Board of Appeals has two vacancies for alternates for residents. Board of Ethics has one vacancy for a former city councillor, one vacancy for residents. Board of Review, one vacancy as alternate for residents. Community Development Authority, one vacancy for resident. Disabled Parking Enforcement Assistance Council, two vacancies for residents with disabled plates. Municipal Golf Committee, one vacancy for a youth representative. Municipal Library Board, three vacancies for residents of Beloit or towns adjacent to the city. Parks Recreation Conservation Advisory Commission, one vacancy for youth. Traffic Review Committee, one vacancy for resident. If you have any interest in any of these committees, I would recommend you contact the city managers or clerk's office. Item number nine, councillor activities and upcoming events. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to begin by sending my well wishes to Mike King, one of our own, and his family and friends and coworkers, and wish him a speedy recovery. I would like to thank our very own paramedics, who literally saved his life, who worked a long time on him to get him stabilized, to transport him. And would just like to let Mike and his family know that we're thinking of them. I would like to report that I attended Art Walk and appreciated speaking with many of our downtown business owners and hearing from them about their concerns and their continued commitment and investment to our city, and I want to thank them for that. And want to thank the Downtown Beloit Association for helping to organize that event. I would like to thank the Finnegan Brothers and their families and all the community supporters who made Vets Roll possible again this year, and looking forward to their return. And I'm excited to see their, you know, the visual welcome home for them with the flags down Riverside Drive. So, thank you to everyone for the support of our community's veterans. And then finally, I'd like to announce that I'll be attending the Beloit Property Managers' Association Summit with City of Beloit, where our local landlords, who are committed and invested in our city and providing high-quality, affordable housing for our residents, will meet with city staff to work on partnership of how we can do even better things for our city. So I'm looking forward to that summit to take place and would certainly encourage my colleagues to attend as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you. Counselor Vander Bogart.
Couple of things, Mr. President. The Art Walk's review was a nice success the other Friday night, and then all of us had a chance to participate in a day-long strategic planning session the other Monday, where we started over at the library at eight and finished about five o'clock in the afternoon. So, have a chance to participate in that. Thank you.
Counselor Kincaid.
I went to the Art Walk, a garden walk, but I had the time of my life at the Public Works Garage. I want to tell you, being there with all that gigantic equipment, which I don't normally get that close to, I just goes down the street every week or every, if it's a street sweeper, every six weeks or every month, was just a joy. I wanted to be a kid again. Yeah, I think what really brought that up was that there were so many kids there with their parents, and they were really plugged into what was going on, very curious. And the staff for each of those heavy gigantic machines, some bigger than a fighter truck, I think, were just giving all kinds of information. And they were having a great time on the grounds, and as was I. So I would urge those of you who missed it this year, be sure to look for it next year.
Ms. Lukey.
I too attended the Art Walk, and somehow we avoided a quorum, because I think most the councillors were here, but if three of us saw somebody else coming, we left. But it was a beautiful summer evening in downtown Beloit. Warm, it was just kind of magical walking back around downtown, beautiful downtown, the big streets, and seeing all the people out. I would hope this can be, can happen in Beloit. It was wonderful. I want to thank President Sharnoff for being here. I think, I set it off, and the schools are the community, and the community is the schools. We're together, we're one. So, we're in a partnership, and that's, that just, that bond is even stronger now. And Matt, you and your crew, this is beautiful, this home. So keep it up. I got a few more in time, you can do it. So thanks, Rick. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice President Spencer.
Well, this is going to sound like deja vu, but I also attend the Art Walk, had a fantastic time, and it was great to not just see all the businesses, but all the great artwork, and went home with a little more than I'd planned to, but it was, it was very nice. Also wanted to extend my well wishes to Mike King, and hope that his recovery continues as well as it seems to be going so far. Also hoping to be able to attend the Property Managers' Association meeting, trying to get off work for that, so I intend to be there if at all possible, and also looking forward to a couple of meetings we have coming up, including a joint meeting with the school board and our workshop on the proposed chicken ordinance. So, a number of interesting meetings coming up before our next regular meeting.
Thank you. And Counselor Mead.
I have nothing.
Nothing, okay.
What?
Well, and I have only a small comment to make about the, about that house over on, let's just say, 630 Park. I went through that building when Mr. Finnegan and the Landmarks Commission went through it, and I didn't breathe very well for three or four days. That place was an absolute moldy hell inside. It had a, almost, it had a hole large enough for four people to stand in in the middle of the roof. It's phenomenal that someone would be able to take that structure and bring it back from the blink of oblivion. I appreciate it very much, you know, I can't, I can't express it that enough. Thank you very much, Matt. And that's all I have today.
We do have a presentation for council of the communities tonight. It's our annual update on code enforcement activities. Terry Downing is here tonight again to share with you some of the statistics, overview the program, tell you a little bit about what the plans are for this current year. So, Terry.
Thank you, Larry. I have for you tonight a short presentation about the city's code enforcement program. So hopefully you can see it with the lights on.
Yeah, we can knock those down a little bit.
Yeah. The city's code enforcement program has three components. A systematic interior rental inspection program, the multifamily residential inspections, and citywide code enforcement. For the systematic interior rental inspection program, all buildings containing one or two rental properties are scheduled for inspection on a three-year cycle. Four full-time and one part-time inspection officials complete these inspections each year. If a complaint is received, the inspection official may inspect the rental property more often. There are over 2,400 single-family and over 950 duplex rental units. 447 of these units are Section 8 and will be inspected by the Beloit Housing Authority Section 8 inspector annually. The multi-point inspection items include working smoke detector and/or carbon monoxide detector on each floor, conditions of stairs and presence of handrails, sanitation including presence of rodents, insects, and vermin, condition of all interior surfaces, the heating facilities in all habitable rooms, openable windows in all bedrooms, light switches in all habitable rooms. They check for dangerous electrical issues. They check the exits and entrances cannot be blocked. Stairwells must be well-lit and not blocked, and the door to the unit must be lockable with a key from the outside. Regarding the multifamily residential inspections, all buildings containing three or more rental properties are scheduled for inspection on an annual basis by one full-time inspection official. Fully sprinkled and buildings that have their own individual entrances are inspected once per year. Unsprinkled and partially sprinkled buildings with common areas are inspected twice each year. Half of the apartments are inspected at each inspection. Currently, there are 2,366 multifamily housing units. The number on the, on your PowerPoint was incorrect. The multifamily residential inspections, items include functioning exit and emergency They check fire extingu, that the fire extinguishers must have up-to-date tags. They check sprinkler heads and review of sprinkler maintenance reports. They check for legal extension cords, storage of flammable or combustible items. They make sure pull alarms are being tested once per month. They make sure fire doors are functioning. They make sure apartments are numbered. And property maintenance items are covered during this normal systematic inspection. Inspectors locate violations by routine observation, citizen complaints, referrals from other city departments, and systematic interior rental inspections. The exterior code enforcement areas are assigned by inspector. Can't really see it on the map, but each color is for a different inspector. That way, the inspectors can patrol an area and look for exterior inspection, or exterior The code enforcement process starts when an inspector identifies a code violation and sends a letter which outlines the violation and the timeframe to comply. All complaints and citations are entered All complaints and citations are entered into the MUNIS code module, and staff will work with property owners and, upon requests, will approve reasonable extensions. If the code violation is not corrected, a citation is issued. The list of fines are listed at the bottom there of the slide. Examples of violations that are required to be corrected immediately are motor vehicles parked or stored on the grass, unregistered or unlicensed motor vehicles parked outside of an enclosed building, vehicles over one ton are not allowed to be parked in a residential area, people are not allowed to work on, working on motor vehicles or motor vehicles in, like the bottom picture there, where somebody's clearly working on it and it's sitting there, bulky appliances stored on the property. Examples of violations required to be corrected in five to seven days include tall grass and weeds, and trash and debris. I think that happened last time I was here.[816.01][816.01](Laughter). The alarm went off. Examples of violations that are required to be corrected in 30 days, interior repairs including electrical and plumbing. If an electrical issue or similar issue is a safety violation, the property may be posted unfit. Screens and storm windows, dead trees, interior sanitation issues, like the top picture there, and interior peeling paint, like the bottom picture. Examples of violations to be corrected in 60 days include exterior painting, large property maintenance projects, driveways, and roof repair or replacement. Examples of violations to be corrected in 120 days are major property maintenance issues and repairs. For 2011, these are the statistics for number of parcels inspected compared to number of housing units inspected. Gives you a listing of the systematic interior, multifamily interior, and exterior inspections. As you can see at the bottom, there were 7,300 inspections done in 2011. Over 1,500 notices of violations were issued, and 338 ended in citations. If anyone has any questions, they can contact the Division of Community and Housing Services at that number, but if you have any questions now, I'll try my best to answer them.
Thank you, Terry, for the presentation. I'm wondering if you have any sense of feedback from the staff about how frequently inspections are conducted on a systematic basis. So I noticed that there were 7,300 inspections with 1,500 resulting in notices of violations, and just wondering if you have a sense of how staff would feel about properties that, you know, continually don't have any issues or notices of violation, and there's no problems of continuing to inspect them every three years, or possibly spacing those out to less frequent, since those are properties that we haven't had problems with in the past.
Staff has, we have talked about adjusting the systematic interior rental inspections, but it's more been brainstorming on what we could possibly do, because we do have a number of property owners that don't take care of their properties, and sometimes it's because, and there are safety issues for the residents and the tenants living there. So we have been brainstorming. We're meeting with the landlords on Thursday for the landlord summit, so we can get some more input there, and we're willing to, you know, figure something out that makes sense for both sides.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Terry, we have four full-time inspectors and one part-time. We have five segments in the city. Does our part-time person do the smallest segment?
The part-time person does a segment of the city that doesn't have many violations compared to the other sections. So it's not as smaller in area, but maybe smaller.
As far as rentals.
Right, as far as rentals, and that is, the map that you saw is just for exteriors. Rentals are inspected by the last name of the landlord. The landlords requested that if they have many properties, they deal with just one inspector. It makes it easier for both sides.
Thank you.
A resolution rejecting all bids for Public Works Contract C-1202, New Telecommunications Hut Foundation.
Thank you. This project will construct a foundation for the prefabricated building and replace the existing telecom hut at the base of the Missouri Water Tower. One bid was received for the project, a little bid of $118,241, and some change was from Gilbeck Construction and is 507% over the engineer's estimate. Wow.[1130.16][1130.16](Laughter). That's all we could say when we opened those, was wow. Gilbeck Construction was the company that we received it from, and they are a responsible bidder. The cost for the project was well over $100,000 more than what was anticipated, and I'm recommending rejection of any and all bids for this project. At this time, we are taking it back to re-engineer and rebid.
So just for clarification, Mr. Flesch, do you think this was an issue of design specs clarification?
We, the structure was elevated, and it was going to be open underneath, and in our opinion, the consultant excessively overdesigned the floor support system.
Okay.
And so we're looking at different measures as part of our review before we rebid.
Okay, so then, does that mean we'll be more specific in describing the materials?
No, we're going to change the design.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
The reason, Mr. Flesch, we're doing this is to get it up out of the floodplain, and this is a mandated thing?
Correct.
Okay.
That's it, yeah.
All right, question, all of the ladies say aye. Any post? If you have a question.
I'll get the next one.
A resolution awarding Public Works Contract C-1216, Riverside Park North Improvements.
This project will construct an arch entrance feature and sign sidewalk spike path and landscaped elements near the intersection of Henry Avenue and Riverside Drive in the north end of Riverside Park. Four bids were received for the project, a little bid of $291,151.53 was from corporate contractors, who is determined to be a responsible bidder. The costs for the project are the base bid plus $42,000 and some change orders and extra work. As part of this project, this resolution, we're also requesting a budget amendment of $34,000 from fund balance of TIF 6 to cover the change orders and extra work potential. It's usual and customary for us to have that. So really, the project came in under budget of the $300,000 we had for it. We need money for the contingencies in case we need them. We recommend the approval.
I guess I would just like to make a comment to express that I am in support of an entrance feature for our city and beautifying this end of our park, but however, I feel that this price tag is just too extravagant. I think we could do something really quite wonderful for far less, so I would just like to make that comment. Thank you.
Vice President Spencer.
Two questions, Mike. First, how likely in this particular project do you think it is that we will need any of the contingency or change order money?
We're hoping to use very minimal amount. It's a well-designed project, and we're not anticipating any need, but whenever you don't budget for it, something blows up in our face. So we'd really prefer to have the contingency in a sense that it goes back to fund balance.
And second, can you clarify the source of funding for the project?
TIF 6.
That's all.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, if I have any questions, all of the ladies say aye. Aye. All votes?
Aye.
A resolution authorizing the application to the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin to increase the City of Beloit water utility rates.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to point out, this is not a resolution to increase water rates. What we're requesting here is the authority to proceed to apply to the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin for a simplified rate case analysis. And we submit financial information to the PSC, they review that, and they're the ones that determine whether or not an increase in the city's water rates are justifiable. And they would actually set those rates. We don't apply and ask for X number of dollars. They literally give us what we need in order to operate our water utility. We included this in the budget for this year, and I know we have discussed that with the council as part of the budget process, and I believe it came up last week during our strategic planning workshop. So with that, again, the request is for the council to authorize us to proceed to file a rate filing with the PSC for an increase in water rates. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Can you explain to us, Mr. York, the need for the increase? Any specific projects that are on the horizon where we need to get the money upfront?
There are a number of capital projects that are scheduled for next year in the water utility, and currently, we don't have a specific funding source for those projects. Any increased revenues could certainly be devoted to that. Of course, our water rates are also used not only for our capital expenses, but also the operating cost to operate the utility, from utility expenses that we incur, salaries, benefits, and chemicals that we use to treat the water. All these things are taken into consideration, you know, by the PSC when they review the financial information that we present to them.
And the alternative to not doing this is to what? Wait two or three years and then ask for 10 or 12%?
Well, actually, I'm not sure, you know, if it would result in an increase of that magnitude, but we did meet with the PSC in 2010. That was the last increase in water rates the city had, and at the time we met with them, the PSC strongly encouraged us to consider more routine rate filing on a regular basis in order to mitigate the need for potential large increases in water rates. So this is actually, was at the PSC's recommendation that we're making this request, to make this filing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. And my voice is changing. Sorry. Mr. York, and just for the public's information, is it correct that the PSC would not approve a potential rate increase unless it truly felt it was justified in order to maintain our water utility?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Not so much a question, but a comment, and I mentioned it before, I would just like to state it again, that a lot of times when we look at these potential rate increases on anything that we do, I personally don't take it lightly, because I too am a homeowner, and the last thing that I want to see is my expenses go up. So, to the public, as Councillor De Force would always say, that when we look at these issues, it's not, oh, well, let's just do it because we can, or let's just do it because we think it's a great idea, but ultimately, what we do around this table here also affects us. So I want people to understand that this is not something that staff presents to us and we go, well, go right ahead, because the taxpayers don't have enough, you know, to pay. We are taxpayers as well. And I just want to get that out, because I really think that sometimes maybe people forget that at some degree, that, you know, we also live in the city, and we also are, you know, we pay the same taxes, and we pay everything else that everyone else is paying. So when we have issues like this, it's not that we just say, go right ahead and do it without a lot of questioning, because none of us down here want to see our rates go up as well, but we do what's in the best interest of the city, and I just had to say that.
And I'd like to point out to the public that we are responsible for the solvency of this utility. When we took over this utility from a private company that was profit-based, they would have regularly asked for these rate increases. It is entirely likely that you'd be paying more today had it been left in private hands. I think I would like, that's what I would like to point out. Anybody else have any more questions? And finally, a question.
Not second?
Second by the course, all of the ladies say aye.
Aye.
They are here.
No. 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 No.